All right, I'll call the August Planning Board meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all those here in attendance tonight. We did have a forum, so we don't have to vote on any absentee members. We'll call them all in. So at this time, I'd ask everybody to review the minutes from our April 29th meeting. Most likely see things need to be amended.
I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of April 29th.
All right, so we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? There is none. I asked for a vote for approving all the minutes as written, the April 29th meeting. All those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? There is none. We don't have any guests tonight, so I don't think you have any public comment. Sheila, the correspondence part, is that something that...
I was just gonna tell you I wanted the permits to be issued since the last time we gathered, if you were up to know.
That's fine.
Historic NC Realms came and got their building permits issued for the two lots right beside Oak County Home Road, which run over 64 Alphamet. I got a set that repair permit that I got Mayor Fonda Berg to issue for me. Some citizens came in to defer about some road French ordinances. I gave them a copy of commission standards. We had a complaint about property on Trestle Loop Road with trash and furniture and everything thrown in the yard. I had two complaints. I spoke with the owner. He assured me he'd take care of it. To my knowledge, I've heard by him, he has taken care of it. We had another complaint about our usual place, which is down the street with the trailer den. That's been in Home Court. Usual complaint, so the grass growing left RVs in the park from a pothole in the driveway. I do know that he has repaired a couple of potholes, I think, on the main drag going into the trailer park. But I have not been into the trailer park, is it?
All right.
That's it.
Thank you for sharing that. All right, at this time, we'll do our new business. At this time, we'll do the oath office for Lurue Weaver. So I'll turn it over to the mayor to perform the oath office.
Thank you, Brian. All right, Lurue, welcome first.
Thank you.
And then Lomidia. You'll rise.
Oh, boy.
Left hand on the bottle, right in the air. I, Lurue Weaver, do solemnly and sincerely swear. Repeat after me, so.
Oh, you want me to read that, or I gotta...
Just repeat after me.
Okay. I, Lurue Weaver, do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of said state.
And I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as Board of Adjustment and Planning Board member, so help me God.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as Board of Adjustment and Planning Board member, so help me God.
Thank you.
Good. Hallelujah.
Congrats. Well, good.
Hallelujah.
All right, so our next item of business, I'll give you an update on Middle East Commission. I did reach out to Joshua Hollis. He's the planner for Middle East, who's working on our rough draft and the ordinance. He has been loaded up with a lot of other projects and still working on the ordinance, which it's okay. I mean, obviously, I look back at some dates when we did it last time, back in between 2003 and like 2011. Between that time period, we, you know, developed the one we have currently now from the original one, which was only about 42 pages, so, I mean, that was a long process going through it. You know, I feel like it's still gonna take some time for him to go through and, you know, update it and work through that, and then it'll obviously take us some time to go through and make sure, you know, it's what's right for the town. So I did have a good conversation with him, and whatever he does get the rough draft. I've asked him would he be able to come. That way, you know, we'll have a chance to review it, and if he was gonna have any questions, then we can go from there, you know, so.
I'd actually thought about if we go and get it, let y'all look at open first and write out a list of your questions, and then get him to come after y'all get it and read through it, because it's gonna be a good question. Y'all could go through it together, of course.
Yeah.
I think it's very important that we don't rush, that we don't rush, so, you know, we take time to read it on our own, come together with our questions, and, but I'm not, I'm not gonna be rushed to do it. I think we need to be thorough. I've been a part of this a piece of time, but you, you all have more experience than some of us, so I wanna make sure we do it right and don't get in a hurry.
Well, I can add, last time it was done, we had the two gentlemen from the cog come. They, they basically got a rough draft together. They gave it to us. They actually came to the meeting. We had a lot of discussion, really debating, you know, do we word it this way? And the reason they were here was they, they know the ends of the law listed in the general statute, so they kinda guided us, well, you, you can't do it this way. Law, you know, the law says you gotta have, you gotta allow this in a certain area. So, you know, none of us are sitting here are lawyers and know the law and...
That's why we, that's why we ask.
Yeah.
We ask for them. Our group asks for them, so.
We can interpret things, but are we interpreting it correctly? And two, we wanna make sure whatever we end up with, you know, fits my, you know... And what I'm planning to do when we get it is I'm, I'm gonna take the old one. I'm gonna start going through the new one, and I'll see. And he said he's gonna have listed out in the margin, when they adjust something, he's gonna have a reference, so we can go back to the old one and compare.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask. Are, are we gonna get a marked up copy? Like where they line through what they're removing and what they're adding?
Yeah, he said they would have it, they would have it, they would have it noted, so we would know what's being adjusted, what section of the old one.
Okay.
So, just an update there. Move on to our next item of business, which is the AT&amp;T maintenance on the cell tower. So, in, so this is, just to kinda bring the new members up to speed. Years ago, we had, when they first were gonna put that cell tower, we had public hearings. You know, all the landowners around it came, and it's a lot of debate. It was a little, little bit of contentious hearing, you know, because landowners were, you know, worried about how is this gonna affect the new cell tower. Anyway, through all that process, it was approved. They built the cell, cell tower. So what this is, is they're coming back to us. They're gonna do some maintenance. And my understanding, Sheila, and correct me if I'm wrong, there is maintenance and they're adding on for AT&amp;T? Is that correct?
They're putting new equipment on, taking old equipment off.
Okay, so it's, it's maintenance, you know, updating equipment, so.
It's basically the same thing that they did for, what is it? We did it last year.
It was T-Mobile, right?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, we already added T-Mobile to it.
It's basically the same thing, replacing, have they parked, can you park it?
So, everybody, this, so we can get that. And a lot of volunteers here just showing, you know...
I did, I emailed everybody, everything they sent me, but I only printed out the, the last one with all the schematics. $70,000. It was 67, 70 pages.
Well, I think the, one of the things is the weight, you know, they're adding equipment and weight, but obviously, on such a big unit, it's not a good deal.
So what we're tasked with is looking at it to approve the maintenance. So I'll give everybody a few minutes to review that, and then we can discuss if discussion is needed.
So what form, what are we approving? They have to do, get a permit? They have to get permission?
They have to get a permit, right, Sheila?
Correct, yes.
They get a permit to do the work. Then they take that permit from us and go to the county.
Correct.
So that's what we're approving, the permit for them to...
Proceed with the maintenance.
Yeah, proceed with the maintenance and also go to the county and get their building permit. Does anybody got any questions, discussion?
I think I asked this the first time we did this, but when we, when we do this, you're not saying that we know what they're taking off and adding on.
The engineering is on them.
I mean, that's more...
Yeah, the engineering's on them. They just have to go through the process of permitting from us.
Well, it does tell you what, if you look at the drawings that I sent you, it does tell you exactly what they're taking off.
Yeah, I was looking at it.
Exactly what they're putting off. It tells you exactly how much it weighs, and...
That don't help me know to just...
Right, but I'm just saying, technically, you're supposed to sit here and look at those drawings and those weights, and just kinda know it's not gonna overpower that antenna that you see on the...
I hate to say that, my baby's a good one.
And I know either, but I'm just saying, yeah.
So I, I can add, because I deal in the construction industry, so there's an engineer record, which he's still finding drawings. He's responsible for assuring that the structure and design that can carry whatever they're taking, so... What we're doing is we're gonna approve, we're gonna approve whether to grant a permit to do the maintenance, and, you know, which they will take to the county, and so, and we, I know this is at least the second time.
Maybe the third time since that day, yeah.
Maybe the third time that we've, you know, either added or ma, and done maintenance.
Because one of them was when Cloudwise wanted to put sets in on there.
Right.
And the other one was T-Mobile wanted her to do the maintenance. And now this one is AT&amp;T doing maintenance, like T-Mobile, yeah.
So, so all of the maintenance is gonna be within their sight?
Yes, yeah, so it's, it's exactly how, you know, we've approved it before when T-Mobile and Cloudwise were adding on, so.
But they got, had a metal in big print, and they didn't know they're gonna do something better.
I mean, I mean, we approved the, you know, cell tower maintenance.
All right, we have a motion to approve the permit for the cell tower maintenance. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
So we have a second. Uh, you're an alternate.
Oh, I'm an alternate. Oh, that's all right. You're stressed, then.
Sorry about that.
It's gotta be Patrick Hilling.
I don't know.
Sorry.
So we got a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the permit by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? There are none. All right, move on to our next item of business.
These things, you don't...
You know, one, just look at that. I gotta...
I mean, I didn't know, even, you know.
Just leave it in the middle of the table after I'm ready, sure. If you don't want.
All right, we got the item of business, the Berry Pryor Stores Building. That is, uh, the, the people that own the, um, the Link Hill lot, the old Link Hill place, they have sold their house, gonna live, correct me if I'm wrong, Sheila?
They've got, they've got to do some major repair to their house. And they own a townhouse in Rocky Mount. And she called me and said that they were going to move out of their house and move into the townhouse, but they have a lot of furniture and stuff that is in the house they currently live in. And she asked me could she put another big storage building to put her furniture and stuff in, while they lived in the townhouse, to sell their house and start construction on the house they're gonna build here. I told her that I could not give her permission to do that, that I would have to check with y'all and see if y'all have a problem with doing that. She said, because she didn't wanna have to pay, uh, storage fees, which she had a perfectly good piece of land, and she could put a nice storage building on it, store furniture and stuff. So I told her I would ask.
So, um, I know she's talked to you about permit for her house. Has she got her permit for building in there yet?
No, she's talking to the builder. The builder they're talking to is out. Well, I don't know if they're gonna deal with him or not, because he keeps stretching out that he can start on her house. He first told her six months, now he's told her it'll be eight months. And I think from what she told me, they wanted some things from them that they're not willing to do. So I think she is looking into finding a different builder. I don't know, I'm sure, but that's kinda what she indicated to me.
Okay. So this would be, is this a permit, like we granted, um, this is not like a permit we granted the guy for the, uh...
No.
This is a...
This isn't temporary. This would be a permanent structure.
Yes.
So is she gonna buy, like, one of those ones pre-fanned?
Yes, that's what I was saying.
Okay.
I mean, you know, the one she put up there, doesn't, to me, there's nothing wrong with it, but anyway. But she wouldn't know she could put, I think, a larger one, if you're gonna put to store furniture in her non-perishable things, I think.
I don't have my own, it's, what is it saying about?
Well, the ordinance is...
The primary residence has to be on...
Yeah, the primary residence, that's what they are. And she, um, did she indicate, uh, is it gonna be close to where the one, the storage building she already has?
Probably. She didn't really tell me. I didn't ask.
Okay.
I just thought I would see if it was a feasible thought, but I would let her do it.
So she has indicated she plans to build there, right?
Yes, they're gonna build a house there, yes. And she's also said plans about cutting off part of her lot, because she would like for her daughter to also build a house in that section and have a house there also. Yeah, that's, that's down the road plan. That's not next week or next year, I don't think.
So currently, the way the ordinance is, the primary residence has to be built first, then the, the storage building, so... What is, uh, everyone's discuss, well, let's discuss it and see what everybody's thoughts are about, do we grant the permit or not?
Well, I mean, the ordinance is the ordinance, and the one that's there now is not supposed to be there. And we didn't, I don't know how about permit process for that, win or not, but... I just, I always think about when these things get asked, what if 10 people came to the same question? How would we handle 10 requests?
All right, anyone else have any further discussion?
How was the first one?
Building, I told her that she could do it. I don't remember that. I've heard about it some time. I discussed it with the mayor, who didn't have a problem with it, so I told her she could do it. But I will say, yeah, the ordinance is the ordinance. But if she really wanted to, she could put the building there, and there's nothing in place to punish her for doing it. So at least she is asking, can she do it?
She just wanna bigger one, or she gonna have a...
Just wanna put a bigger one beside of the small. The small one is where they house their lawn mowers and the equipment that they use to keep the yard maintained and cut. This one would be a little bit bigger, I'm assuming, to store her furniture and stuff, you know. Because their plans are to move into that townhouse that their tenant moved out of.
The type of be, so, the type of building you're describing is like the one that I, I purchased and had moved.
Probably, yeah.
All right, built some skids. I got a permit.
Or behind your residence.
Yeah.
And this, or instead, her residence will face 64.
Well, I know you like to help people when, when they're in need, but if you start doing one thing, it's not in the ordinance. Where do you start?
Right.
So what I, what I say is, this is my, I say we stick to the ordinance. And if she had the primary residence built, then it wouldn't, it would be no issue to grant the permit. So in order to stick with our ordinance, my opinion is we don't approve. So, any, any further discussion on that? I'd ask for a motion.
You don't have to do a motion. We're just discussing it.
Okay.
I just have our top two better.
Does everybody agree with that?
We need to go here with a motion and reg it.
Yeah, I, I think we need to, I do, I think we need to have a motion that we either approve it or not approve it, and then vote on it. That way we have it on record.
We just uphold our ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if, they could get a bigger one, they could just stay in it for a while. That would be right.
They would not do that.
But, I mean, that's some woods, I don't mean, you got that possibility.
So, I have a question. If, if, if they pull the permit and start construction alone, then they can, can, at that point, I'm, I'm looking at the...
Like the...
I'm learning the ordinance, okay? I'm like, it took me 20 minutes to find the thing. I'm redoing. I'm just curious, like, what's, does the house have to be completed? Is it living?
I don't, I don't know if, um, with the ordinance. Because a lot of people build, a lot of people build a storage building when they're building, you know, their main house.
Yes, yeah.
The primary residence has to be there first. They can't do another building unless the primary residence is there.
Chick later break into, should it block wifi password?
Is that, is that like a password or something?
No, it's chick ladder break into, which is a little bad, anyway, I had to change it.
I'll need to get that.
That is bad, aren't you?
I don't bring that thing, because I can't get none of the work. I mean, I can't, I can find nothing. I didn't bring it in the joke, have a listen. You can get all the rest of that, and then I can back out. Well, I mean, I tried working, but I... I didn't mess up with my phone. They'll call me, they'll ring, oh, like my ring. And I got it up and I answered, because I recognized him, and I said, "Nancy, you can do it." Very modern, but you had it updated on that phone, and they're free the same time. You got it?
I'm working on it. It's not in the spot with the, there we go, accessory buildings. Table of the business was supposed to be a Christmas according to the different impacts. I took the insurance tax accessory that be located in the side of your yard on the street. Not less than the principal building set back, structure of building should be set back five feet. So that was a principal building for minimum distance to heart, should look at the principal building. I thought it was somewhere here. It says that the primary has to be there before.
I mean, that makes sense. It's not a residence. It's not a residence for that house.
Well, and the thing is, you know, a lot of languages, it must be a distance of X amount of feet from the principal structure, but that means the principal structure has to be there, so it kinda goes without saying in many other sentences. I'm in section, I'm on page 68 and 69, section 35 or 6.
I'll start to read it.
Oh, yeah, the height, the height doesn't extend the height of the existing principal building.
Right, it's gotta be existing.
I thought it said that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that, that makes the decision easier, in my opinion, because how can you make sure, plus with the height requirement and the, the plans for the house aren't finalized?
And, and also, design wise, I mean, if they haven't, they haven't finalized their plans or their builder or all the things, you know, they, those things might change, and they have to move the building or, or whatever. We don't want to get into that either.
Yeah, sorry, I...
No, I'm not. No, I'm not.
Questions are allowed.
And even, even the feet away from the principal structure doesn't seem very far, because the, the county building code comes into play too, right? Like, for the, the county structural, have you seen funny things people have done with the building was too close? It's gotta be ten foot away.
Well, I, they would follow our ordinance on the distance from the property line.
Uh-huh. So the county inspector does, the building inspector does it, but they're following our-
Right, so it's when they apply for permit, they've gotta meet those requirements before it's issued. So-
Up on our ordinance.
So I make a motion that we, uh, not approve it and we hold to our ordinance, uh, as the ordinance says. Accessory use building. Do I have a second? Do we have a second? All those in favor are aye, for saying aye. Anyone opposed? They are aye. All right. All right, at this time, I, um, reached out to Sheila a while back about, I remember years, in the years in the past, we got some, some E, uh, modules that we can watch on planning and zoning. Uh, felt like it would be good for, uh, Josh and Rue to go through this, as well as all of us, because, you know, if you don't practice this every day, um, and study it every day, you kinda lose the basics, so this would be a good refresher for all of us. Uh, on the last town council meeting, uh, it was brought before then, and the town council, um, voted to spend a hundred fifty dollars to purchase the module so we could, uh, go through these, so, um, appreciate the town council, uh, approving that, I think it's worthwhile for all of us to go through it, even the ones that have been on the board for a while. Um, because the laws do change, um, general statutes change, so it'll be good for us to get a refresher. So at this time, uh, we'll try to watch as many as we can. I think some of these modules are, uh, twenty, thirty minutes long. Um, and I have a list.
Each dot is a, is a, uh, segment.
Let me see, Sheila gave me a list. Uh, so it starts out with basics of development regulations, local land use planning and, uh, types of land use decisions, legal procedures for rezoning, legal considerations for rezoning, quasi judicial process, uh, proceeding, quasi judicial cases, preservation, commission basics, local historic districts and landmarks, and then COAs and qua- quasi judicial procedures, so, um, all good stuff, so.
How long do we have to be able to watch these?
We have a year.
A year?
We have a year, so it's not like, you know, we gotta all watch it.
I'm gonna get y'all a link. I've emailed them three times to get a link, if I could share with everybody, if you're watching at home, if you want to. They haven't answered me yet, but-
Uh, plan is to watch them here in our meeting, and then if we do have the ability to, um, have access to outside here, then, you know, you can, you know, do study it on your own.
You know, that's good, that you know in the past, when we had these, and you have them, when we watch here, you got in your mind so you can discuss things that comes up.
The, the good thing about us all being together is we can have open discussion, because somebody may have a question, so, um, I know way back, when I first came in this morning, the Upper Coastal Plains Council of Government had, they had a couple of meetings where you, um, I actually went. Um, you know, it's kinda, it, it was a challenge, because it was during the workday and I had to take off, but it was still good. Uh, information about learning, learning the zoning rules and, you know, how to run it here and then-
All of those were there, you don't need to do it.
One of the things I didn't add about, uh, Mid-Easter, Mid-East, um, the Upper Coastal Plains Council of Government, they used to have a division that helped, uh, towns with their ordinance, but, uh, they had a representative at the town council meeting, and he, he said that they don't have that capacity anymore. Um, and they've been partnering with Mid-East to handle some of that. Um, so, I was, you know, glad to hear that, even though the Upper Coastal Plains Council of Government doesn't operate anymore, they do have a partner. And we're partnered with, uh, somebody that the Upper Coastal Plains Council of Government, uh, recommended, so I was really pleased to hear that, because, I mean, I, I was in, Kelly were on here when, uh, a gentleman by the name of Dennis Patton and, uh, Ben White, who, uh, later on came, and they, we had a lot of meetings, sitting around this table, discussing, uh, you know, ordinances and what does state allow, so, um, you know, re- they really helped us a lot in the past, and so, I am, we got a partner now, that can still tie to the cotton, but, you know, in a different capacity. So I'll let Sheila get started. Get going through.
I'm probably gonna cut out, cut off the light here, you say, just need a screen better. If that's okay to everybody?
So let's talk about the basics of local development regulations. My name's Adam Lovelady, I'm a faculty member here at the UNC School of Government. In this session, we'll walk through the types of development regulations we have in North Carolina, and the types of development decisions you might see at the local level. It helps to have some context as we're thinking about development regulations. So here's a story, perhaps it's a familiar story for you and your community. On the edge of town, there's a farm, there's a small, uh, country road, and a few houses along that country road. But the farmer has been working this land for decades, and time for retirement. The retirement plan is sell the farm and move to the coast. So, the farmer does just that, sells the property to a developer who comes in and changes those fields and forests over to rooftops and roads, playgrounds and community centers. A dramatic change for the landscape, of course, a dramatic change for the community. Now, there's lots of different interests in that change, there's lots of different perspectives about whether that's a good thing or not, and the impacts that might create. There is, of course, the property owner, the developer, and their perspective. That farmer has been banking on selling this property for retirement. Certainly got a, an interest in that ability to sell the property, and the developer has got a business model built around building new homes and new communities, providing for economic development, and providing for new housing in the community. So certainly those interests and those perspectives come into play as we're thinking about this change and whether it should move forward or not. There are also, of course, the close by neighbors. Neighbors who may have some concerns about changes to this landscape, and what it might mean for additional traffic on that small country road that's not built for a whole lot of traffic. May have some concerns about what this will mean for the water and sewer availability in their area, or the well and septic safety in their area. They may have some concerns about whether this change, adding all this new impervious surface is gonna mean stormwater runoff and flooding is going to impact their property. So there are legitimate and important concerns that those neighbors may bring to the table. They may also have some other more general concerns. They like having a farm next door, they like watching the sunset over the pastures, they like letting their dog run on those fields even if it's not their property. And so they have some interest in the change that's, that's taking place, that may be less directly related to their property, more to the broader area and their interest. Occasionally, there may also be some illegitimate considerations that are raised by neighbors, that we don't want those people in our area, we don't want their kind around here, that's not right for our community. Those kinds of considerations are not appropriate, and can't be part of a public decision-making process around le- land use and changes. Then there's the perspective of the public, the perspective of all of us, about what this change means and whether it's a good thing or not. On the one hand, we as a public are interested in property tax dollars, and the new development will bring in more property tax revenue than the farm. We're interested in economic development, we're interested in new homes, and we're interested in being a growing and thriving place. At the same time, we have concerns about what this change may mean for us as a community. Do we have the infrastructure in place to support this development? What's it gonna cost us to not only put that infrastructure in place, but then maintain that infrastructure over the long term? What's it gonna mean for public services, like schools and police and fire and EMS? Do we have those public services available? Or is this gonna it's outstrip the, um, current available capacity of our community? And there's a balance to be drawn there, lots of, uh, push and pull about those broad policy considerations. There's also important, kind of baked in considerations about a sense of place, and what's important in this community, what's the character of this place, and how do we want to preserve that going forward? One of the perspectives that sometimes gets dropped off of the local dis- discussion and local decision-making are the future residents of that neighborhood. They're looking to buy homes or rent homes, they're looking to move into this, this community, but they may not be here yet, and so they're not showing up to the legislative hearing. They're not voicing their opinions, because they may be in a different state or a different country. But certainly they have a perspective, they have some interest in the decision-making around this change in the community. On the one hand, they'd like for that development to move forward, but they do want good safety regulations in place, they wanna make sure that those roads are going to be good, safe roads over the years, they wanna make sure those homes are built to appropriate standards, and make sure that there's adequate infrastructure to support this growth over the long term. Now, there are some ways that these different perspectives align, there are some ways that these different interests are lined up together, but there is also some tension built into this, and you see this in your local zoning, uh, cases and fights. Folks don't always see things the same way, they may see, uh, see these issues very differently. One of the ways that we can start to try to find some balance and resolve those tensions is with setting up the rules, with having good development regulations in place so that our community is on board, our community is in agreement about the types of development that we want, the ways that we're going to ensure that infrastructure is adequate, and allow for property rights and investment, but also make sure that the community and the neighbors and the public is protected. Now, I set this up as a discussion around a residential subdivision, because it's a fairly common story, it's something that many folks are familiar with, you've seen it play out in your community. But these same fights play out in all kinds of development. And so, questions about whether the mattress store should be able to put up one of those, uh, inflatable sign things. Different perspectives on that, and the development regulations can come into play there. Infill development, and the ways in which folks should be able to or not tear down existing homes and build up new ones. What should it look like? How should it fit into the surroundings? Should there be design considerations applied to that? Not just in town, but also on the edge of town or out in the county, questions about things like solar farms and major changes to the agricultural landscape. The development regulations come into play there, and there's oftentimes a dispute among the neighbors and the property owner and the community at large. Or as we're talking about housing, and we think about density and multifamily housing, commonly these same stories play out. Uh, difference of opinion, different perspectives and tensions between the owner and developer, the neighbors, and the broader community. Our development regulations are ways of addressing those. Now, one of the big development regulations is the zoning ordinance. Zoning is, uh, kind of a central piece of local land use regulation, and it's got two parts. Zoning ordinance is a map that takes the jurisdiction and divides it up into different districts, and then it's a text ordinance that sets forth the rules and regulations for those different districts. Now, some of those rules and regulations are about the development itself. How tall can the buildings be? What kind of landscaping has to be placed in between different types of land uses? How many parking spots do I have to put with my commercial development? Where can buildings be placed on the lot? How much setback, how, uh, d- does there have to be? How far does the building have to be from the public right of way? These kinds of development regulations, development standards, are a kind of critical piece of the zoning ordinance, and they very much shape what new, what new development will look like in our communities. In addition to those development standards, one of the key pieces of a zoning ordinance is regulation of land use. We commonly talk about land use law, and zoning is the central piece of land use law. If your community has a zoning ordinance, you've got a use table that looks something like this. And it may be pages and pages long, and it may go into a mind-numbing level of detail about the different types of uses that are allowed and where they're allowed. If you're looking for a fun diversion, pull up your use table and just scan through all the levels of detail that we go to. Now, at the high level, it's important to recognize and keep in mind, some of those uses are gonna be listed as permitted, they are allowed by right. So if we're talking about a residential zoning district, building a single-family home in that residential zoning district is probably going to be allowed by right. It's a permitted use. I don't need to go to city council or the county commission for extra approvals for that, I just need to pull my building permit, maybe get a site plan approved, and move forward with construction. Other uses are going to be prohibited. The use table will clearly say, no, not allowed. So if I had property that was zoned for residential use, if I tried to set up a power plant, it probably would not be allowed, that would be a prohibited use in the residential zoning district. But then, there's gonna be some uses that are in between, they are maybes. Commonly, these are gonna be set as special use and require a special use permit. Now, a special use permit is a special kind of development approval. It's a quasi judicial decision, essentially the property owner's gonna have to come forward with some evidence, with making their case about why this particular use should be allowed. There are standards in place, but the standards are not clear, objective standards, the standards require some evidence and some judgment. So, for some zoning ordinances, if there's a residential zoning district, property is already zoned for residential, perhaps a multifamily development, an apartment complex or a condo, would require a special use permit. Maybe I could build an apartment complex on this residentially zoned property, but the board is gonna wanna see some additional detail, see whether this fits in this particular location, what's it gonna, what are gonna be the impacts of this particular property, or this particular development to nearby properties. So some uses are allowed, some uses are prohibited, some uses are a maybe. Moving from the zoning ordinance, there are other development regulations, and the land subdivision ordinance is one of the big ones. Land subdivision is very closely related to zoning, but it's its own set of rules and its own set of authority from the state. The land subdivision regulations are the rules of the road for taking a large tract of land and chopping it up into smaller lots. What infrastructure has to be provided as that process happens? What are the property records that have to be used and recorded with register of deeds in order to go from that large piece of property to those smaller lots? How is this going to fit with the broader community and address public health and safety? The subdivision ordinance addresses those topics of infrastructure and property records, and ensuring that the new growth, the new, uh, subdivision of land fits with what's nearby and with the growth plans of the community. Closely related to both subdivision and the zoning ordinances are the requirements, the local regulations around infrastructure and environmental protections. Whether that's tree protection ordinances, stormwater requirements, or requirements for water and sewer and street connectivity. Those infrastructure and environmental regulations are big drivers for the shape of development and growth in our communities, and they are- and growth in our communities and they are key considerations for the public health and safety as growth is taking place and making sure that there's adequate infrastructure and environmental protections in place. There are also the building codes and the property codes that apply at the site level. Now, some of these are going to apply on the front end. Our state building code is set by state agency, by the North Carolina Building Code Council and the Residential Building Code Council. And those are for new construction. The building code sets the technical requirements for buildings, electrical, plumbing and the various trades. But also for existing development, we have a variety of building codes and property codes that may kick in to ensure public health and safety. And so ordinances concerning unsafe structures and condemning or tearing down buildings that may be unsafe to the public. Minimum housing codes that set basic minimum levels of habitability to make sure that the residences within our community are safe for habitation. Nuisance codes that set limits on overgrown lots or junk cars related safety considerations. Those building codes and property codes, while not integral to the broader zoning and subdivision rules, are still important pieces of the kind of overall puzzle of development regulation within our communities. Now, there's all these different types of development regulations. I've given some highlights of the ones that commonly kick in for development. Those regulations can be standalone ordinances. So your community may have a zoning ordinance, a subdivision ordinance, a stormwater ordinance and so on. Or your community may have a consolidated ordinance, bringing all of those different development ordinances together. This is commonly called a unified development ordinance, but there's different names for those kind of consolidated development ordinances. Either way is fine. There's authority to have standalone ordinances or a unified ordinance, but different communities make different choices about whether they want to have it consolidated or split it Now, we've got some considerations, some baseline of the types of regulations. Now, I want to give us some understanding, some context for the types of decisions that might be made. This is especially important because there are different procedures that apply to the different types of decisions. So depending on which decision it is, we have to follow different sets of rules. For this, I want to break it apart into three main categories of development decisions: administrative, quasi-judicial and legislative decisions. For each of these, I'll go through the basic details so you can start to see the contrast between these different types. First off, the administrative decisions. Administrative decisions are the basic ministerial, objective decisions that staff makes day in and day out. When the zoning officer goes out into the field and issues a notice of violation, the use of the property is either a violation or not. It's an administrative determination to issue that notice. Or if the planning staff is reviewing a basic zoning application and issuing a zoning permit, clear, objective standards, that use is either allowed or it's not. We can take out the tape measure and determine whether that building is set back 20 feet from the right of way or not. Now, typically there's no hearing to go with these administrative decisions. There's not a lot of judgment and discretion. We don't need a lot of public engagement for these decisions and so there's no hearing necessary. In some limited circumstances, there are administrative hearings so that a property owner may be able to make their case and make their, kind of give their rebuttal to the administrative decision. So in minimum housing code enforcement, there are required administrative hearings. Typically, it's going to be the staff who is making the administrative decisions. And so issuing that notice of violation, reviewing that subdivision plan, reviewing that zoning permit, those are clear, objective standards and they're typically handled by staff. But worth noting that sometimes planning boards and governing boards also make administrative decisions. If your board is making those administrative decisions, important to note, you don't have a lot of discretion. You don't have a lot of leeway here. If the applicant checks the boxes, they get their permit. There's not a lot of need for public input and public engagement. Shifting from the administrative decision to the quasi-judicial decision. Quasi-judicial, like a court, these decisions are formal, they have legal procedure to go with them, they are like a court making decisions. The reason for that is there's heightened due process because of what's happening. What's happening is we're taking the general rules, we're applying them to a particular property and there's some gray area, there's some need for judgment and discretion, there's some need for evidence around this decision-making. These quasi-judicial decisions are based on discretionary standards and the decision has to be based on evidence that's in the record. An example of a quasi-judicial decision is a variance. Variance is when a property owner asks for the rules to be relaxed just for them. If I'm seeking a variance for my property, I'm asking kind of for the rules to not apply to me. And in order to do that, I have to provide evidence that the rules create an unnecessary hardship for me, for my property. Now, how much hardship is enough to be unnecessary hardship? We can't take out the tape measure to decide is that unnecessary hardship. There's some weighing of the evidence, there's some judgment and discretion we have to bring to that. And so this is a quasi-judicial decision, it requires an evidentiary hearing. These hearings, as I mentioned, are formal in process, they have a lot of legal procedure with them. We're going to swear in the witnesses, there could be cross-examination, we're looking for factual testimony and documents. These are quasi-judicial, they are like court decisions. Staff cannot make quasi-judicial decisions, it's typically going to be an appointed board. The Board of Adjustment is commonly handling quasi-judicial decisions because they're the ones that are assigned for variances. But some other boards also make quasi-judicial decisions and so some planning boards make special use permit decisions. Sometimes governing boards are making those special use permit decisions. Important to note, for governing boards, if you're acting in a quasi-judicial capacity, it's different than when you're acting in a legislative capacity. It's not a general legislative hearing, it's an evidentiary hearing. And we're not basing the decision on the broad political winds or considerations, we're basing the decision on the evidence that's in the record. So we really have to know what kind of decision is this and what leeway do we have? What kind of decision-making can we use? Finally, the legislative decision-making. This is going to be the focus for our discussions around legislative process and legislative considerations. Legislative decisions are the big, broad policy decisions. These are going to be made by the governing board because they are the elected officials, the local legislative body that are empowered to set the rules, to set the policy, to adopt the ordinances. Some examples of legislative decisions. If there's an application for a rezoning, to change the zoning map, that's a change to the ordinance, that's going to be a legislative decision. If there's a proposal for conditional rezoning, that's also legislative in nature. And if there's a proposal to adopt a new ordinance or amend an existing ordinance, that's legislative and has to follow the legislative procedures. When we're holding a legislative hearing, these are the more familiar public hearings that we think about, where lots of folks get to show up, lots of folks get their three minutes to say their piece about what they think about this, give their opinion. These are political in nature and it's a broad public engagement, hearing from lots of different folks. There's not a requirement for folks to be sworn in for these legislative hearings. We're seeking public input and public opinion for these legislative hearings. Now, I mentioned that it's the governing board that are making these legislative decisions and in general, that is true. Worth noting that there are a few communities that have special approval, local legislation from the General Assembly to allow planning boards to make rezoning decisions. Unless you have that special local legislation, all legislative decisions are going to be made by town council or the county commission, the local legislative body for your community. So we've talked some about the types of development regulations. We've got a framework for the types of decisions. I want to highlight some trends that we're seeing in zoning, some of the ways that zoning is changing that might inform for your community ways that you might consider your zoning and discussions that are happening that may impact your community. One of the ways that zoning is changing is an increasing use of form-based codes. Now, worth noting that form-based codes are just a type of zoning. It's a different formatting and different approach to zoning, but it's still zoning. It's regulating where buildings can be located, it's regulating how buildings are kind of configured and how they relate to the street, it's regulating the types of infrastructure to come with that new development. The difference and the change is that commonly with form-based codes, form-based zoning, rather than starting with the uses and differentiating commercial uses over here, residential uses over here, industrial uses over here, form-based codes, they use as their starting point creating different place types and then applying those different place types to different areas. And so perhaps we're looking for a central business district type of development in this area, downtown, more dense. Perhaps in other areas, we're looking for a main street, kind of low-density, commercial and residential type of development. And in other areas, we're looking for more residential and suburban models of development. Form-based codes think, kind of put that as the beginning consideration. Use is still regulated and so there are still use tables and there's still differentiation of some use, but typically form-based codes are going to encourage a mix of uses where appropriate and encourage more density, more walkable development, more integration of transportation networks and transportation alternatives. We've seen many communities in North Carolina adopt form-based codes, some of them going back for decades and some more recent additions. And so perhaps your community has form-based codes or some communities nearby have incorporated these types of approaches to their zoning. Another change that we're seeing discussed, both in North Carolina communities, North Carolina as a state and across the country, are discussions around different types of residential uses and the extent to which zoning allows or does not allow those different types of residential uses. And so commonly in a conventional zoning ordinance, there's allowance for single-family residential over here and multifamily residential over here. There's very little in between. And if there is anything in between, it's distinguished into different districts. And so single-family large lot, single-family small lot, duplex, triplex, quadplex, multifamily. Many communities have started to rethink that and wonder if our residential zones ought to allow for more types of housing. In some places, in some of our North Carolina communities, they have already changed their zoning ordinances to allow for more of this missing middle type of housing, allow for more housing alternatives within residential zoning districts. There have been discussions in the North Carolina General Assembly around these topics and perhaps requiring North Carolina communities to allow for this type of development. The North Carolina Building Code has been changed to apply not the residential code not just to one and two-family homes, but to one, two, three and four-family homes. And so that's not impacting zoning necessarily, but an indication of broadening the types of houses that fall under the Residential Building Code. Worth noting too, that other states have taken steps to adjust state laws and require local communities to allow for more housing within their zoning districts. So this is a national discussion and topic worth keeping an eye on and monitoring for your community and your local development regulations. And a third way that zoning is changing that I'll highlight because it's becoming so prevalent in North Carolina communities is the use of conditional zoning. Conditional zoning is a tool that's available for North Carolina communities to apply specific conditions to a rezoning. In essence, conditional zoning is creating a zoning district unique to this one property and this one development. Now, those individualized standards, that individualized site plan that is incorporated into the zoning for this site is part of the approval and it can be a very flexible tool. A variety of conditions can be applied through conditional zoning, but those conditions have to address the compliance with the ordinance and with adopted plans and those conditions can address the impacts that are reasonably expected from this development. Conditional zoning is not an opportunity for kind of pulling out the wish list and requiring anything and everything of one developer. It's not a way of resolving a community's failure to invest in infrastructure over the last decades. But conditional zoning is a very useful tool for addressing unique projects that may not fit into our current zoning or high-impact projects that are creating extra impacts for our community and for the nearby neighborhood. And so applying conditions to address those impacts, to resolve those impacts, conditional zoning is a very useful tool. Worth noting that this would have to be at the request of the property owner. Conditional zoning cannot be forced upon a particular property. And any conditions that are incorporated have to be approved by both sides, by the local government, through the approval, but also with the written consent of the applicant, of the developer or the property owner. Communities in North Carolina are increasingly using conditional zoning for addressing the impacts of projects and it is a very useful and flexible tool. Thinking long-term though, conditional zoning is not right for everything. And so thinking about five years down the road, 10 years down the road, if I'm the zoning officer going out to make sure that everybody's adhering to the zoning rules and every different project, every different property has a different set of standards. Setbacks are different, sign requirements are different, parking requirements are different, landscaping requirements are different. The administration and enforcement of that is going to grow increasingly challenging. So conditional zoning, a great and useful and flexible tool for unique projects and special circumstances, but maybe not the right tool for run-of-the-mill development and standard growth happening around our state. With that, we have covered a variety of development regulations that we have here in North Carolina. We've also gotten a framework for the types of development decisions that we have between administrative, quasi-judicial and legislative. And we've gotten some sense of the ways that we're seeing zoning change, perhaps even the ways that they're changing in your communities.
How long is the next one?
It is 20 minutes.
So let me ask everybody, the next one is about 20 minutes long. That would put us probably about 8:30, wrapping it up. Is everybody good? We're going a little bit longer, watch one more. All right. All right, she looked good. Kick it on.
What are the requirements to have a land use plan in North Carolina? How is the land use plan used? And how do we implement land use plans? Those are going to be the topics for this brief session, talking about local land use planning in North Carolina. Hi, I'm Adam Lovelady with the UNC School of Government. Let's talk about plans. As we go through this session, first off, I just want to talk about the basics of local land use planning in North Carolina, which is different than in some other states. We'll talk a bit about ways that communities can implement plans and then I'll give some highlights about the role of the planning board in North Carolina communities. First off, let's talk about land use planning. There are lots of ways, lots of reasons that we as a community might want to have plans in place. Certainly if we've got growth happening, we've got rezonings proposed, we want to use our plans to guide our development decisions. Good planning is a way of engaging the public in policymaking to know what our community vision is, to know what the constituents want. Having good plans at the local level. Having good plans at the local level is a way for us to be wise with our public dollars, to invest in infrastructure and growth in the places where we want it, not to build bridges to nowhere or to put pipes in the ground that are going to drive growth in areas where we don't want. Going through a planning process is a chance to get some technical analysis, to know where we are right now, what infrastructure is available, what are the growth trends that we're anticipating, so that we can be ready to respond when that next rezoning comes or that next proposal comes across the desk. Planning is a way of identifying the needs and the priorities for our community. There's only so much capacity, there's only so many dollars, so where are we going to focus? What are the top actions that we need to take? There are some legal requirements for local plans in order to qualify for some state and federal funds, and also just some general regulatory requirements that call for local land use plans. And at the end of the day, our communities have plans so they can have a vision. They can know what's important about this place right now, what do we want to hold on to, but how are we going to respond and move forward to become a stronger, thriving community going forward? A recent change in North Carolina law is that now, communities have to have a land use plan if they're going to enforce zoning. With the adoption of Chapter 160D, which is the statutory chapter that authorizes planning and development regulations in North Carolina, it adopted this new requirement that as a condition of adopting and applying zoning regulations, a local government shall adopt and reasonably maintain a comprehensive plan or a land use plan. So if your community has zoning and wants to enforce zoning, your community has to have a comprehensive plan or a land use plan in place. Also, that plan has to be reasonably maintained. Now, what does that mean? We don't have statutory or court guidance on how old is too old for a comprehensive plan. In general, we use kind of a five-to-10-year rule of thumb for maintenance of a land use plan. If your community is fast-growing, changing a lot, and you're wildly different than you were just a few years ago, you might need to update your plan more regularly. However, if your community is not changing rapidly, if things are still fairly similar to where they were 10 years ago when you adopted your comprehensive plan, that plan may still be fine. It's going to be context-specific. Now, if your community is still working off of that 1985 classic plan that you've had on the, on the shelf for decades now, that one's probably, it's time for an update on that one. Worth noting here that, in contrast to some other states, there's not a requirement for the plan to be approved by some state agency. There are some suggested elements of the plan, but there's not a specific kind of prescription for what the plan shall be. And so there's not a lot of direct enforcement for this planning requirement. The way that it's going to get enforced is if a community does not have an up-to-date plan. When a property owner decides to do something, maybe it's something a bit outrageous, a power plant right in the middle of downtown, and the community tries to use zoning to prevent that, property owner may say, "Well, you don't have a reasonably maintained comprehensive plan or land use plan. You can't enforce your zoning, so I'm going to put my power plant right in the middle of downtown." In other words, make sure your plan is up to date. Now, what about the process? The process for adopting a land use plan or comprehensive plan in North Carolina, it's the same legislative process for a rezoning or an amendment to the text of the zoning ordinance. So it's going to be referred over to the Planning Board, it's going to require some notice and a legislative hearing, and adopted like an ordinance by the governing board, the town council, or the county commission. I mentioned that these plans have to be reasonably maintained, that five-to-10-year rule of thumb is what we have for now. Note that in North Carolina, land use plans and comprehensive plans, they're still advisory. These are not regulatory documents, and so they're not binding. We'll talk in a minute about how do we implement these plans. One of the ways of doing that is to make sure that our development regulations, our zoning and subdivision, align with the plan, because those are the real regulations, that's where the real teeth are. Your land use plan or comprehensive plan can be coordinated with other plans your community may be doing. And so if your community is in one of the 20 coastal counties that's subject to the Coastal Area Management Act, KAMA, your community's already had to have a land use plan, you can have one plan that can be aligned to count as your KAMA land use plan and your zoning land use plan. There are different types of plans that communities might have in North Carolina. I'm going to highlight four. One of the types of plans is the comprehensive plan, land use plan. These are the traditional focus of local planning, and commonly, when we're talking about the local plan, we're talking about the comprehensive plan. A comprehensive plan is taking a long-term look, it's looking out 10, 20, 30 years at where our community's going to be and how we're going to shape ourselves to get there. Just like the name implies, the comprehensive plan is comprehensive in nature. It's looking at all kinds of topics: land use, transportation, housing, economic development, environmental matters. It's looking at the whole jurisdiction and many topics within the jurisdiction. You can see there the branding from Charlotte's recent comprehensive plan update, the 2040 comprehensive plan, that just recently won a national award from the American Planning In addition to the comprehensive plans, we might have more specialized plans, looking at smaller areas. You can see here an example from Knightdale, their River District Small Area Plan. These small area plans are looking at smaller areas of the geography and focusing in, so it could be a particular neighborhood, or maybe an important entry corridor, maybe it's a historic preservation district that we want to really focus on and have plans for. Now certainly, these specialized plans can interact with the comprehensive plan, and so maybe the large comprehensive plan said, "Well, we need to have some focused plans for these particular areas." We also have functional plans. These functional plans are looking at specific topics, and so, transportation of thoroughfare plans, or you can see the example here from Apex, a capital improvement plan. These plans are generally shorter in nature, and they're looking at specific topics, specific targeted topics for the local government. Finally, we have strategic plans. Strategic plans are looking at a kind of smaller set of issues and really focusing in on specific actions and issues. These can be really useful if we just had a new council voted in on specific platforms and focused on specific issues. They don't want to wait around for two or three years for us to put a comprehensive plan in place. They want action now, they want to focus in on their important topics. You can see here an example from Raleigh, their fiscal year '21 to '25 strategic plan. As I mentioned, these are taking a much shorter time horizon and focusing on action items and moving top priorities forward. Many of our communities in North Carolina already have plans in place, and they have the capacity and resources to adopt and maintain their plans. For some communities, there's limited capacity, and they may be looking for a streamlined process for putting a land use plan into place. If that describes your community, I'd encourage you to take a look at the resources related to the PLAN NC Guidebook. We put this resource together to be a kind of handbook and a springboard for small communities to go through a deliberate process of establishing a land use plan so that they can have a good, robust public engagement, but not break the bank in the process. This is intended as helping a small community move a plan forward, get it adopted, and be able to move forward with planning and zoning. So those are some of the basics on land use planning in North Carolina. Now, a plan is only good if it's implemented. Otherwise, it's a lot of effort to no effect and no end. So how can we implement our plans? I highlight three main ways in North Carolina that we might implement plans. One of those ways is where we invest, where we spend our public dollars. That is a direct way for our communities to implement the plans that we have in place. The places where we put in water and sewer, the places where we invest in roads and infrastructure, that's going to support growth. And so, communities can take steps to invest in those areas where they want growth to go, those identified priority areas for growth. At the same time, North Carolina communities can choose to limit the public services and public infrastructure that's going into places that have been identified for limited growth to be maintained as rural preservation areas. You can see here on the screen a map of the southeastern corner of Orange County. There's Chapel Hill and Carboro, and then some of Orange County. This map identifies the rural buffer that was set up and agreed to by these communities as well as the local Water and Sewer Authority, OWASA, going back to the 1980s, when these local governments identified they wanted to focus growth into the towns, but also preserve the rural areas near the towns, and so put limitations in place to limit the public infrastructure going into that rural buffer area and focus it back into the towns. Another way that our communities might implement an adopted plan is through the actions of the local government and how it's organized. When we stop and think about our local governments, they are robust, big organizations, and the way that we organize that local government, the way that we operate that local government is an important way for implementing our comprehensive plans. So if we're building out a new parks and recreation facility, does it align with our comprehensive plan and our land use plan? Is it supporting the vision that we identified there? If our comprehensive plan said economic development is the most important, the highest priority for our community, have we structured our local government in a way that supports economic development and the economic developer? The way that we arrange our staffing, the way that we support our departments can impact and implement the comprehensive plan. Does our Public Works Department even know that there's a comprehensive plan? And is their annual capital improvement plan aligned with the priorities and the vision that's outlined in the comprehensive plan or land use plan? Bridging those gaps and aligning those different plans and those investments is an important way of implementing our local plans. And of course, our development regulations and decisions are key, critical pieces for how we implement our local plans. Now certainly, when that new rezoning proposal comes forward, there's a requirement to consider. Does this align with our plans? Is this consistent with our plans? When we're making a special use permit decision, there's a requirement that the applicant show that this proposal is consistent with applicable plans. And so when we're making those decisions, we're considering the plan, and we can implement the plan through that decision-making. But we don't have to sit around and wait for developers to show up for us to rezone property or align those development regulations. After you adopt a comprehensive plan, after you adopt a land use plan, it's time to update the regulations. It's time to update the zoning map to align with the future land use map. It's time to update the regulations to align with the priorities that are identified, to give some teeth to those plans and the vision that was identified through the land use or comprehensive plan. Those are some of the ways that we can implement local land use plans. Finally, let's talk a bit about the role of the Planning Board. There are some Planning Board responsibilities that are outlined in state law. The Planning Board is absolutely involved in comprehensive and land use planning and serving as an advisory board, maybe overseeing that comprehensive plan or land use planning process. If our community is first adopting zoning or adopting a whole new zoning ordinance, the Planning Board is required to advise on that and give comment on that process. When there are amendments to the zoning ordinance, that's got to be referred over to the Planning Board for them to give written recommendation on that proposed amendment and to give comment on whether that action is consistent with applicable plans. And then other development regulations can also be referred over to the Planning Board. That's a local decision, they're not required to be sent to the Planning Board, but if there's an amendment to the subdivision ordinance, or there's a proposed update to the stormwater management ordinance, those types of development regulations can also be referred to the Planning Board for review and comment with regard to plan consistency and other considerations by the Planning Board. So there's some things that the Planning Board has to do. There are some things that the Planning Board can do. Planning Board could be assigned to make subdivision decisions on preliminary and final subdivision plans. The Planning Board might be assigned to be the decision-maker for special use permits, those quasi-judicial decisions about specific uses. State law also allows for the Planning Board to serve as the Board of Adjustment and to serve as the Historic Preservation Commission. And so for smaller communities, where it may be hard to find enough folks to fill the seats on multiple different development boards, there can be an option of consolidating down to have one board that's wearing multiple hats and handling different duties and responsibilities. With regard to the composition of the Planning Board, state law gives a fair bit of flexibility there. There's got to be at least three members, and if your jurisdiction has ETJ, extraterritorial jurisdiction, there has to be proportional representation for that ETJ area. Beyond that, there's pretty broad discretion about how the Planning Board is composed, the terms for the members, how appointments are kind of processed and how that's set up. There can be joint planning boards, and so some communities have a joint city and county planning board, or you could have a couple of, a couple of small towns nearby to have a shared planning board. And as mentioned, some other, some duties from other boards can be assigned to the Planning Board itself. Worth noting that Planning Board members are required to take an oath of office, they are public officials, and they need to take an oath of office. There is an option to get compensation as Planning Board members. If you're not currently getting compensation as Planning Board member, you can take that up with your local governing board. There's authority there, whether or not there's money is for your local community to figure A local planning board does need to have rules and procedure, rules of the road of how you're going to operate and how you're going to make decisions. Under state law, the governing board, the town council, or the county commission could adopt those rules and procedures for the Planning Board. If they're not adopted by the governing board, then that local board can make its own decision about adopting its rules or procedure. Those do need to be maintained by the local government clerk and posted to the website so they're available for the public to know how these meetings should run. So that gives us some context of local planning in North Carolina, the reasons we might have plans and the types of plans we might have, some of the ways that our communities might implement those plans, and then the statutory roles of the Planning Board. Important to note that there's a fair bit of flexibility here. There's a fair bit of kind of space for local, local governments to align things as they see fit for their community. So I've been talking about the state rules, the way that it's framed up for local communities. Within that frame, there can be some variability among different planning boards in different communities. With that, we have run through our local land use planning in North Carolina. Thanks for joining.
So I wanted to add, for us here at MoMIR, we're the Planning Board, but we also are the Board of Adjustment. So there is a special use permit, and we will transition into that Board of Adjustment out here to get the room reviewed and approved. We've had some quasi-judicial hearings in the past, Cell Tower, Touch Brothers Love, may have been a couple of others that I've been involved with, but that gives you an idea of what this board does. It's also made up of It's also made up of some in-town members, ETJ, you and Maru are alternates. But definitely, need you here in the meetings, offering your input, very important. And then whenever one of us are out, you need to step in and fill that role. So really good stuff. Good refresher for myself.
It's really informative.
Hope that really informs you. We've got some more to go through. So really thankful for the town council for voting to invest in spending money for these trainings. All right. So with all that, I appreciate everybody. I know it was a little long meeting, but appreciate everybody's willingness to hang in here and go through that. So I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Do you want to get together again before we have three months?
Um...
Do we have to do some videos or what?
I'm getting ahead of myself.